That's what Deb said two weeks ago.
I did.
Is it because Shannon?
I think it was supposed to be.
It would have been Deb.
You guys start at seven. But the first thirty minutes is the right video.
Yeah, I could do it. I mean, I don't write anything down.
Yeah, right.
I just say the words that God gives me and pray the word.
Does that work?
Yes, I mean, well.
So far.
If somebody wants to. Yeah, if somebody wants to correct me.
That's why God speaks to me beforehand.
There are multiple cases.
Yes, as I'm reading one person.
It's surprising, you know, with like jail ministry too.
The most we had was one guy had five cases. And then everybody else was either one or two.
You don't have anything prepared, say to those guys, what do you say to those guys?
It was wild. Yeah, I've never done anything like that. I thought we would be there until like seven.
I saw that a long time ago, but I haven't come up with so many.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we gonna?
Nobody has a, nobody has a.
We had one.
Fire around.
Okay, sounds good.
It is one o'clock Tuesday, December twentieth, time for our regularly scheduled commission meeting. Is there, no, Madam Clerk, to call a quorum.
Wait five seconds.
Oh, there she comes. All right, well, wait a minute. Right here. Hello. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Today it is Commissioner Ortiz's turn for the prayer and the. The flag, the pledge of allegiance. Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can pray with me. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for everything that you've given us. We just ask that you be with us as these times come, Lord, where we share time with family or those of us who are at home. Lord, we ask that you just keep us safe, keep us healthy. Lord, be with those first responders, the firefighters, EMS, Lord. Be with all of them who are out in the cold and fighting for, for others. We ask that you bless them and bless their families as well, Lord. Help us to just keep an open heart today, Lord, and as we discuss what's on the agenda. And help us to do that in a healthy fashion, Lord. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Next is approval of the minutes. Were there any changes or corrections that anybody saw? If not, the minutes stand as approved. Public comment. If there's anybody in the audience who I would like to come up to the podium, you would have five minutes to speak, and this is on things that are not on the agenda. Okay?
Item seven A, mayor and commissioners, this is the report of the city manager. First up, City Prosecutor Jennifer Cunningham will present an update on municipal court prosecution services.
Okay, good afternoon, commissioners. I'm going to apologize ahead of time. I don't have much of a voice. I'm getting over some sort of illness, I'm sure. But I lost my voice and nothing else really came with it, so. This is a review of the municipal court over the last year. More specifically, the prosecution side, as that's what I've been charged with doing under the contract that I have with you all. This is the current setup that we have in municipal court. We did have our last set of hearings last Thursday, so municipal court is essentially finished for the rest of the year. The judge is appointed by the city manager and approved by the commission. This year, you all contracted at the very end of the year with Linda Lohmeyer, but we had three judges throughout the course of this year. We started with Judge Frere. And then when Judge Frere left, we had Peter Ramirez, who was really awesome and filled in all the way up until the time that Linda started. And now Linda's been with us for a month, and I can honestly say she's one of the more enjoyable judges I've ever worked with. I really enjoy her personality and the way she's kind of taken on her role in municipal court. It's been fun. So I think that was a great addition by you all. And it's really changed the dynamic as well. She interacts with staff really well, and it's been nice, so. And then you have your court independent coordinator, who Cynthia kind of runs the entire department, keeps the judge and I coordinating and facilitates court. And then the senior court clerk, and then three full-time clerks that work underneath her. And then they added a translation clerk just a couple of weeks ago, and so she's been training during court on listening to me talk to defendants and listening to that translation so she can pick that up. And that's all under your assistant city manager, Danielle. So she kind of oversees, oversees that particular piece. And then there's me, and you've been contracting the prosecution position since 2020. You had David West do it in 2020 and 2021, and then I started doing it in 2022. And I've, I've just finished my first year. So this is just kind of a little bit of a history. Municipal Court always averaged right around six full-time employees prior to 2014 and had five full-time employees up until December of this year, and now has 5.5. So they're still understaffed from where they were in, in the past, and I think they do a really nice job. They always have dockets prepared well ahead of time, and they do a really nice job of laying those out and making sure we know who's in jail and how much jail credit they have. I'm really impressed with the amount of things they get accomplished with this staff that they have. The municipal judge has, has played so many different roles in the city, from full-time to part-time, to, as you all recall, a shared position with the county, to this now position that we have with Linda and it being contracted. And all of them have had pros and cons. And so, you know, it's just a matter of what works at the time for the person who is filling that role. And we're, we're really excited to get a full year with one judge, one prosecutor, one set of staff. I think it's been a while since we've had that. And then prosecution, for the most part, the city of Garden City always had a full-time prosecutor and three full-time staff people working in the prosecutor's office, so four full-time employees. And that was from 2000 to 2019, and then that's when we went in 2020 over to the contracted position and sort of left that up to the contracted person to figure out what staff needs were required. There is no one who works in municipal court who does anything for prosecution. We don't have them draft any of our documents. We don't have them file any of our documents. We do all of that out of my office. So this is kind of a cost breakout of what you're currently paying each segment of municipal court. It starts out with the municipal court actual expenses for 2022. This is projected. It's actual through end of November and then projected for December. You're in a municipal court judge contract, and then you're a city prosecutor contract.
Those are in addition to the 572 or included in the?
Nope, those are each segment.
Okay.
So this just gives you a little bit, and I wanted to give this to you because you had this last year, and so I just wanted you to kind of see the breakdown of cases. I was really impressed this year. You'll see that the case filings are, have upticked a little bit, and that, that could be for a lot of reasons. That could be more accidents, depending on weather. That could be just more patrol in general. The more we patrol, the more we catch little things like improper turns or that sort of thing that we might not otherwise have. I would not say that our crime was up or that we had a large amount of DUIs or anything like that. I would say it was more prominent in traffic cases. But you can see, looking back, that it does, it is higher than the last three years. This is something that as a prosecutor, I pay heavy, heavy attention to. And the reason for that is because it's a good gauge for me to see how plea negotiations are going. So on average, in a traffic case, you have about $75 of court costs. And on average, in a criminal case, you have $90 of court costs. Everything else in between fluctuates depending on what you're being charged with. Something like an improper turn would be $40, and something like a DUI would be $1,000. So this tells me when I look at case filings compared to the revenue that the city brings in, which is the, either what I negotiate or what someone pays on a diversion or something like that, this tells you approximately per case how much we're making. And I think this is really important to look at because it gives a prosecutor a gauge to say, am I giving deals too low in the spectrum, or am I not doing things like diversion and fast-track enough? Or am I hitting it too hard and, you know, I'm, I'm overcompensating for that and need to pull back a little bit? And this was something that Matt really drilled into me in about 2013, where he said, I've got to have some understanding of how these things correlate. And you can see, that's when we started changing the trajectory of those numbers. Before that, the number didn't mean a lot because I don't think that that correlation had ever come up. But when Matt said, we got to drill down, we got to start looking at how these things impact each other. Once we started doing that, you can see it became very consistent, and I would expect it to stay that way as long as the prosecutor is paying attention to those numbers. So this is something that I like to show because when we decided to go to a contract position and hire David in 2020, there was a lot of analysis that went into this. We had spent almost a year, the highlighted green number, the 174,000 number. We spent almost a year without a prosecutor. So we could not hire someone. Jimmy had gone to work for Daring Grisal and Cunningham, and we had been advertising for a prosecutor at Washburn, at KU, multiple other locations, and we weren't even getting applicants to apply. Part of that was we hadn't gone through a pay study, and so we hadn't increased the pay. We were still hovering around that $60,000, and the market had shifted more to that $75,000 to $80,000. And so, one, we were struggling to find someone even at an entry-level position. And two, it's always a struggle to get people to come to Western Kansas, especially when the job market for attorneys is booming and they can get hired pretty much anywhere they want. And so when we had gone almost all of 2019 without a prosecutor, I was really trying to think outside the box about what we could do or how we could achieve getting prosecution services without having to search for those candidates. And so, but that also had to balance out with the fact we didn't want to over, we didn't want to go over what we were already spending. And so kind of putting that expense side in the hands of the person who was contracted took that out of the, the city's hand from the variability standpoint. I highlighted these numbers just to show the yellow numbers would show times in which you were paying less in this fund, in this general fund place, than you were paying in your contracted amount now. You can see most of those were prior to 2008. The couple that are here in 2017, 2018, and 2019, we had done some elimination of staff, and so we had gone down to one staff member plus a prosecutor instead of the two staff members and a prosecutor. And at the time, we were also transitioning what had always been probation and diversion inside the prosecutor's office. We were transitioning that out and creating a new supervisory role over municipal court for Jared Coleman, who was in municipal court at that time. The really large numbers, the red number is the largest, and I want to point this out because in 2015, I was actually transitioning out of the city prosecutor's office and into the city manager's office, and Jimmy was starting as a prosecutor. But for the majority of that year, my salary was coming out of the prosecutor's office because I was training Jimmy. So we spent from approximately May of that year through the end of the year, both being on the same line item for prosecution, so that's why that number is so high. In twenty, in the gray numbers, the gray highlighted numbers, those also look really high to me. And so I went back and did some digging to show that that was a period of time. I came on to municipal court in 2012 and was still getting some assistance from Randy when I first got started. So you see some of his services in there. And then what happened in 2013 is Matt actually transitioned me from just the city prosecutor after an organizational study to the city prosecutor and court administrator. And so my duties became over the entire department, and so my salary increased because of that. And so with that, the next two years is how we operated that department. I oversaw all of the people on both sides. And so that's hence why those numbers are a little bit thicker. Everything else looks pretty in line. You can kind of see if you average those out, it's close. Hence why I came up with the $200,000 for the contract. I felt like it was enough to entice people to want to do it, but also it wasn't going to be more than we were currently spending on, on the services. So this breaks it down a little bit farther and talks a little bit, like if you went back to a city department now, what that would look like, bang for your buck. And so McGrath did tell us what we would need to pay a full-time prosecutor if we brought one on in a salaried position. And I did say in this that if we could just utilize one person rather than going back to the two model, if you got a highly qualified legal assistant and you could go with one, you could pay in that $50,000 range instead of having a two combined, maybe lesser experience, but then the two combined would end up costing you more. So sticking with that one. And then you, you add in the other budget of expenses out of 2019, you come to a budget total of $234,000. So when you look at those numbers, it looks as though the city is, the contract is making sense, at least at this point in time. This is what we call our indigent defense expense, and this is also something I keep a heavy watch on. These are the attorneys that you all choose and you approve contracts for to provide counsel to those who can't afford it. So if someone comes into municipal court and they face a jail sentence, they are given a defense attorney. That defense attorney, if they get convicted, will cost them $350, flat rate, no matter how much time the attorney spends, if they plea out or if they go to trial. If they're convicted of something, they pay that expense. For the last several years, when I came on, and we had several different people who were involved in this, but in the last several years, I would say in the last like four or five, we've had the same two attorneys. We've had Robert Knatton and Steve Cott. And going into 2023, we're gonna, we're moving forward with Steve Cott. And you guys are advertising to see if we can get a few more people interested in providing that service. But I like to pay attention to this number because if you look back in 2012, you see that number was 189,000. If you look back farther than that, there were times that this number went over $250,000 in, in amounts we were paying out, and those sometimes are very hard to recoup because people, of course, who are being allotted these services can't afford the services they're being allotted. So the city ends up with this bill. So I like to pay attention to this. I like to make sure that when someone is getting appointed counsel, that, you know, we've done everything on our side to try and help them up to that point. And so both myself and the judge give a spiel at the beginning of court that says, if you want to talk to the prosecutor or try and work out your case before getting counsel, you can do that. And, and just because you do that doesn't mean you waive your rights. So you can always go back and get counsel. This gives them several avenues to take care of their case before they get in a situation where they might owe attorney's fees. And Steve Cott has been amazing to work with. He, you know, if he has several cases and he doesn't do a lot of work on some, he'll just waive his attorney fees for people. He's just very generous, and he's been a very good person to work with on these cases. I've been very thankful for that. So you can kind of see the breakdown for this year. We're hovering around that 127 number. I think the, the more appropriate number is somewhere between that 90 and 95 range. That's where I'd like to see it be based on the, the case numbers we have now. But the thing that's playing into our number this year is we had two separate defendants who had 27-plus cases at one time and were appointed counsel before I started as city prosecutor. And so they get paid out on every single one of those cases, even if we make a deal to a lesser amount, so. So this is just kind of a box of a whole bunch of different things. I think the first three are the most important. My office has me track my hours, both for municipal court and for other services on a weekly basis. And I have spent 905 hours on municipal court this year. Jimmy has spent 156 hours on municipal court this year, and Michaela has spent 1,560 hours. All those journal entries and time using IJS, which is very time-consuming, has, has really bumped her hours up. And then this, these are all the things that we do. We provide discovery to all of the attorneys that are involved in cases. I interact with a lot of pro se litigants. I would say I get about 20-some calls a week from people wanting to know where their case is or how they can process their case. And I take all of those to my cellphone so that people have instant access to whatever they need. And then I, I prepare all of the motions and everything for court, anything that we have going on, interview witnesses. I think we've had three or four trials actually go all the way through this year. Not very many, but we've had several sets. I work with the police department frequently. We go to court three days a week, and I would say those end up being about a half to three-quarters of a day when we're there. I resolve all the victim issues and do all victim notices. I work with the prosecutor's office for diversion and fast-track, or with the municipal court office for diversion and fast-track. And then I help review any ordinances that need change or that we run into that cause issues. We've had two appeals this year to district courts, so I've handled those. And a lot of the beginning of 2022 was doing a lot of cleanup. There were, there were missing notes and things that we weren't able to track. And so our focus, both on my behalf and on municipal court's behalf, has been to make sure that every single case after every single hearing has explicit notes as to what went on so that we can all communicate clearly back and forth. And then just trying to support them while they support me and, and kind of create a cohesive environment. Yeah, I think that's pretty much it. So this is just also a breakdown I had provided you all with last year when I was not doing this. And so I was able to provide a more close breakdown since I had our specific hours for the year. So if you look at this, our pro temp hour, what we pay judges if we have to contract out with someone if our judge is gone, is $150 an hour. You can see the current judge's contract. Our pro temp rate for attorneys who fill in for me is 180, and then I reimburse the city for that out of my contract fee. Bids in the state of Kansas pays $80 an hour for attorneys to do work. Our indigent rate is 350 per case. So breaking down my contract, the $200,000 that you pay me, Michaela allocates about three-fourths of her time, which we did not anticipate. We anticipated that it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of about half. But after a period of time, she said, in order to do this right, I need about three-fourths of my time allocated to this. So we do, as the slides come forward, you'll see some of our plans for the future, but. So her salary allocated for 30 hours a week takes about $30,000, $30,000 out of that contract allocated to that. So to the prosecutor, you have about $167,000, and these hours are broken up. Jake did just a few hours, five, nothing too exciting. But if you look at that over a projection for year-end, once I wrap everything up at 1,067 hours, that works out to about 156 an hour. If you look at per case, you can see this year it's going to be about $56 per case. And some of those go really quick, and some of those take forever. But overall, I think it has worked really well, and I think it's been a really, it's been a really interesting year for me, and I feel like it's been a, a good play back and forth with municipal court. So this was a breakdown I showed you last year, and I just wanted to show you again kind of some different things that other places do. Ones that have full-time employee prosecutors, ones that do contract prosecutors like you all, and then ones who have just as part of their city attorney contract. It's all in one. So things were excited. Oh, that says 2022. 2022 is ending. I didn't catch that. In 2023, we're really excited about the prospects of a new system just because we think that it's going to bring so much change and so much ability to do things quicker and manipulate cases faster. Currently, in order to put notes in 27 cases for one defendant, you have to go in and manipulate, manipulate the system to do that. And it just takes a significant amount of time. We're really excited about having a full year with everybody in place and everybody knowing how it's going to work and, and what we're going to show up to every day. I have learned some things this year about the things I would like to track and be able to show you next year. And so I've already created a spreadsheet of how I'm going to track those, and I'm really excited to see what that looks like. And then opportunities for growth and change in programs. So as we see diversion and fast-track change and how those can be implemented in different ways that encourage more people to participate, we're excited about that. And then I think Daring Grisal and Cunningham will at some point in 2023 start looking to add an additional person to our staff to help carry some of that municipal court load, which I know Michaela will appreciate. And that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have, or if there's any other things that I didn't answer that you want to know.
So the, the new system's a new reporting system, is that what you're saying, or a new?
So the police department and municipal court have been investigating new court systems that can facilitate what we do. Currently, we have IJS, and it is a program that I can use. They, IT has facilitated a backdoor for me to be in there, but I cannot print from that service, and I can't actually do anything inside of it. The only person who has access to do that is municipal court. And they've granted Michaela a way to drag items onto her actual desktop so that she can do that on, on times when she needs to. But it's a very complicated process, and they stopped supporting that service about two years ago. And so even for municipal court to make changes or to make updates, they're unable to do that. So they've been in the investigation process with the police department to get something that works together. And they've been looking at the same groups that Service and Finance have been looking at, the Tyler Technologies, and several other court systems use that. So I think they're hoping that down the road we'll be able to implement that same court system.
Jennifer, item four, new, under this exciting things, new schedule.
Oh, sorry, I skipped right over that. Thank you. It was so small. So one of the things that, one of the things that the municipal court staff has never loved, or at least since I started in January, one of the things that got the most complaints from staff was the late start time on Mondays because we didn't start trials until 1:30. And that was great, as long as there was no trials. But two things happen on Mondays. We haven't seen, we hadn't had, we haven't had court since Thursday, which means anyone who got picked up on bench warrants since Thursday is sitting in jail, and we have to see them. So you're having trials, plus you're seeing everybody in jail, and you could be seeing up to 15 people. 15 people in jail might take four hours because the jails, it's a very, very slow process. And so part of the frustration on staff was, why are we starting at 1:30? And then having all of this stuff go on, what if we run into the 5:30, 6 o'clock, my daycare closes at 5:00, how are we going to? So we started having conversations early on about, could we push it earlier? Did people want to do early in the morning, you know, that sort of thing? But a lot of that's dictated by what everybody can agree on. And at the time, our other judge was driving from liberal, so really early in the morning was an impact on her as well. She did fine with Wednesdays and Thursdays, but I think that was already built into her schedule. And so there was a lot of discussion around how to remove that 1:30. And so I essentially told them, I can do anything you would like as long as it doesn't interfere with the city commission meetings on Tuesday afternoons. And so I think they started playing with different schedules. And so rolling out into 2023, Wednesdays will remain what they've always been, which is first appearances. We actually don't have a lot of ability to change that because the system is connected to the ticketing system, and that is set out to automatically print tickets for a date and time, which is always Wednesday at 8:30. It goes eight weeks away from when you're writing that ticket on Wednesday at 8:30 in the morning, and it's automatically generated. So that will remain the same. Trials will move from Monday afternoons at 1:30 to Thursday mornings at 8:30. That way, we're building that in, building ourselves in some more time to be able to complete those if we need it. One Thursday a month will be allocated to Steve Cott for his case management day because Thursdays are when he already was set up to do his case managements. And then our other case management days, which are for all, all other attorneys in the community, and then also pro se litigants, those will happen on Tuesday mornings at 8:30. And we don't set those on the first and third Tuesday of the month so as to not, if they run over, which they will, that they wouldn't interfere with the city commission meeting. We do have a full schedule. Cynthia and her staff put it together for myself and the judge. And we do have a full 20, starting 2023, we have a full year of the calendar already built out with all closures. And I'm sure at some point in the near future, she can share that here and, and probably online so that people know exactly when we have court, when we don't.
So I wanted to ask another question about that system. So would it be a shared system between, you were talking about the police department and municipal court. So would they share the costs equally, or would it be something that would be borne by one or the other, or?
I think the way they're looking at it is to share it. I don't, I can't speak specifically as to where it's at right now. I haven't been involved in the cost discussions, but municipal court, it's obviously a much smaller department. And so allocating the portions equally probably at some juncture. But municipal court, tying them together is really important because municipal court accesses so much of what the police department has for our cases.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioners, the balance of the report of the city manager is just monthly written staff reports. If you have questions on those, we'll be happy to try to answer them. If not, we have a scheduled 1:30 public hearing. It's probably sufficient time to call your attention to the meetings of note and to take up the appropriation ordinance, if that's okay. The appropriation ordinance, item 9A, if approved, would be number, ordinance number 2569-2022A.
I'll make the motion to approve appropriation ordinance number.
I'll make the motion to approve appropriation ordinance number 2569-2022A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Vice Mayor Oiler, I'm going to need to call two individuals for this, for the 1:30 public hearing, so if you'd like me to, if you'd like to take just a little short pause, we don't have to recess the meeting, just.
It's establishing it.
Oh, never mind. My apologies. Still requires me to call. Okay, we'll take that up when we get to it. Let's stay in order. That way I don't get lost.
I was quickly looking at the agenda going, did I miss?
I won't get lost that way. Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution declaring the entire boundary of the city of Garden City, or, yeah, as of January 1, 2023. And if approved, this would be resolution 2993-2022. Mike? Nope? Alicia?
Vice Mayor and Commissioners, KSA 12-517 requires when the city has either annexed or excluded territory from the city limits, the governing body by resolution must declare the entire boundary of the city. The city must adopt this resolution by December 31, 2022. This action has come before the governing body due to the annexation of the property known as Lucky Four Investments. The city has not had, has not annexed property since 2020, attached is the map showing the new area annexed into the city limits. Your alternatives are to approve the resolution or to not approve the resolution. Staff would recommend alternative one, adoption of the resolution.
I move that we approve resolution number 2993-2022A, a resolution to calling the entire boundary of the city of Garden City, Kansas, as of the first day of January 2023.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're on item B. I'll dial these numbers. Grant, hi, Matt Allen with the city of Garden City in our city commission meeting. I'm going to try to dial in our conference in Stephen, and then merge the phone calls.
Okay, wonderful.
All right.
Good afternoon.
Stephen, hi, this is Matt Allen with the city of Garden City. We're in our city commission meeting, and I'm, yeah, and I'm going to, I'm going to conference in Grant here, just one moment. All right, Grant and Stephen, can you both hear me?
We are here. Loud and clear.
All right, very good. Commissioners, I'll go ahead and read the agenda item. Guys, you're going to probably be able to hear me okay. I'll repeat anything that the commissioners or anyone from the audience asks, so that you can hear that better. It might be difficult otherwise to hear what's going on on our end. So at this point, Mayor and Commissioners, this is item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution setting a public hearing on January 17, 2023 at 1:30 PM for the creation of a community improvement district. And then if approved, this would be resolution 2994-2022. Danielle?
All right, good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. I am before you again related to the Woodmont Development Project, so I'm not going to go over all of the things that you all have taken action on related to this up to this date. We've been working on this project from a city commission perspective since September, have gotten everything related to the IRB completed, are in the process of the tax increment financing, or the TIF. So you have already seen items related to that, and we'll see some future items. However, the item before you today is the CID. And so the city received a petition on November 22 of this year proposing the creation of a CID to be known as Garden City Plaza 2, which is referred to as the District. As a result, the commission is asked to establish a public hearing for January 17 of 2023 at 1:30 PM here at City Hall in the city commission chambers. So we have been working with our bond counsel, Mary Carson, on this. We've also been working with the developers and their legal team as well to, to get this before you today. So both of those teams have reviewed this resolution before you, and your alternatives here this afternoon are, one, to approve the resolution to set the public hearing, not approve that resolution, or provide staff with any alternative direction. Staff recommends the approval of resolution number 2994-2022 to set the public hearing, and there is no fiscal impact related to the establishment of the public hearing. As you know, we have the developers on the line. If you would like to ask them any questions, I would also be happy to stand for any questions.
Does the commission have any questions for staff or the developers?
Going once, going once.
So if the commission would like to move forward, the appropriate motion would be to approve the resolution setting the time and place of the public hearing.
I move that we approve resolution number 2994-2022A, approving the resolution to set the public hearing on January 17, 2023 at 1:30 PM for the creation of the community improvement district.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Stephen and Grant, the item passed, and there were no questions for you, so thanks for joining us, though, by phone.
Please thank the commission for their consideration, continued favorable consideration, and we look forward to taking the next step.
All right, thank you, Stephen. Yep, they heard you loud and clear. We'll talk to you later.
And we appreciate your time as well.
All right, thanks, Grant. We'll see you. Item C, 10C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the standard traffic ordinance for 2022, and if approved, this would be ordinance number 2947-2022.
Vice Mayor and Commissioners, good afternoon. So this is the yearly adoption of the standard traffic ordinance in UPOC. I think I've stood up here for at least six years talking to you about this. So really, this year, I'm going to talk, well, I'm going, the first one is the STO, so that's all of the traffic, most of the traffic, not all the traffic violations that the municipal court enforces and prosecutes. Really, there's not a lot of changes this year to either the STO or the UPOC, so I'll just highlight some of the important ones. Those are also further addressed in the memorandum. Electric assisted bicycles, there was a lot, pretty much the primary focus this year was better incorporating the electric assisted bicycles. And if you can remember, last year, we had to take special consideration into hoverboards and all these new electronic devices that kids are using that kind of take every single form. So I think I said last year that it takes a while for the law to update itself, to apply to all of that. So that's really what all of this is. There are now some separate classes of electric assisted bicycles, the three separate classes. None of them are considered a motor vehicle, so you don't have to have registration, insurance, a driver's license. But I believe the purpose of the, well, I know the purpose of the classes are to assist in regulating, so if the city wanted to regulate class one versus class two, class three separately, you can do, you can do that in the future, excuse me. The, right now, I think that if you're under the age of 16, you cannot operate a class three, but everything else is pretty traditional. And as far as more on electric assisted bicycles, a very exciting topic, they're treated the same as regular bicycles, and, and so really, you can, you can operate them at any place a bicycle is allowed. You cannot operate them on a trail where it's posted that no bikes are allowed, and some of those traditional bicycle rules. So that's really about it for electric assisted bicycles. Because these terms are used throughout our code and through, well, throughout the STO, they had to go in and change all the other definitions that are cross-referenced, so there's about six, five of them that had to be updated as well. So really, just a, a very simple update. And this is all because state law has changed, and so the STO does a great job of incorporating that. And then Jennifer and I have to kind of sit there and sift through to see if some of that stuff is necessary to do on our side. The only other thing I just wanted to point out with the STO is, and a very minor change regarding parades and funeral processions and marches, the only thing that was changed was just that the chief of police isn't the explicit person that has to approve the processions and the funeral processions and all of that. Now, he can designate, he or she can designate that to anybody else. So very minor change, and, and that's really about it for the STO. Does anyone have any questions?
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 2947-2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the Uniform Public Offense Code, and if approved, this would be ordinance number 2948-2022. Jimmy?
Thank you again, hello again. So there were even, there were less changes to the UPOC. You would think that since the UPOC deals with, you know, battery, possession of marijuana, theft, there'd be a lot more changes, but really, the STO is by far much more technical, so there's a lot more nuance involved with it. So really, this year, the only major thing with the UPOC, that the, the change in state law was just to change the definition of possession to lower really the standard for that, to a knowingly constructive or actual possession, rather than the way it was in the past. It could be intentional as well. So not really a huge change. Now, the other change that I wanted to talk about deals with criminal trespass. This is something that we came up with on our own. We worked with Chief Pruitt on it. A lot of times, as, as you all may know, you know, there are unwanted individuals on property on behalf of the owner or an authorized person, the police can go in and ask that, give them a trespass warning, and tell them, hey, you're, you cannot come back here for another year, or whatever the case may be. So we've encountered in the last year or two, and probably for a very long time, situations where people are trying, the officers are trying to serve the trespass warning on an individual, and that person is, is just not cooperating at all. And so just, this really just makes it really clear that serving that trespass warning is an official duty of the police officer, so interfering with that duty can be a separate offense of interference with police. Now, just to give everybody some peace of mind, that, that, you know, that can take many forms, but the standard is a pretty high standard. It has to be a substantial interference, so if they're just talking a little bit or not be cooperative, that's not something that would lead to an arrest. It would be something where they're like running away or, or doing something much more severe. So that's really about it. Another one that, there was, there's actually a new, the last thing I want to talk about is there's a new offense under state law, and that was incorporated into the STO by the league, and that's operating an aircraft under the influence. We do not see, you know, a real, we do not expect a real possibility of a lot of those offenses happening, so, however, it is going to be on the books.
Where might, do we find the, that last one you mentioned in this ordinance?
So that is actually in the ordinance, in the UPOC itself.
Oh, okay, all right.
So, yeah.
That wasn't something we made a local amendment to?
That's correct, yes.
All right. Does that apply to unmanned aircraft?
I have not looked at that specifically, but I would be.
Operate, like, operating a drone under the influence? I don't, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I can look into that.
Not pertinent for the adoption of the ordinance, just curiosity.
Sure thing.
I move that we approve ordinance number, the 2022 UPOC ordinance, ordinance number 2948-2022.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question. I mean, this is not, I know that I've been reading, and medical marijuana has probably a better chance than ever to come up before the legislature this season, and so what type of things do we as a community need to be preparing if that happens? And do you know, is there, and I've tried to find it, is there a way in Colorado, if a county does not want to have, like, the sale of marijuana in their county, they can actually opt out of that? Do you know anything about, is that going to be an option for us in Kansas also if that is pushed through, or?
So I haven't explored that issue specifically. I, I don't know a whole lot about it, just because marijuana's pretty much always been illegal in the state of Kansas. However, it would, it would probably depend on whatever form it takes in the Kansas legislature. So that'd be something that we can, I can certainly keep in the back of my mind, looking at our updates from the league, because they do legislative updates, and we can take a look at that. So if they give an indication of which way they're going to go, if, if, if there's an opt-out provision or not, or if it's something we think is just going to be forced on the cities, we can certainly take a look at that and, and update the commission.
Yeah, because there's not a lot of, it's kind of, I can't find a lot of information of what they're proposing, so if you do find something that they're proposing, I would appreciate you forwarding that, and maybe, and I was going to contact the league also, because I cannot find, I can't find what they're actually proposing for Kansas.
Okay.
And so, but I would be interested, I don't know if it's the same as they did last legislature, but, I mean, it could have profound impacts on especially cities, so.
All right, Commissioner, would you like me to contact the league, or do you want?
No, I can, I'll contact the league. I didn't know, I didn't know if through the attorneys, if you, and knowing that you update the code and how we, and we have to actually, you know, enforce the code, that once they do that, I didn't know if you had access to any of that stuff.
I haven't came up with, or seen anything yet, but I'll certainly take a look at that for you.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure thing. Thank you.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the Third Amendment to the Schulman Crossing Phase II Development Agreement. Danielle?
Good afternoon again, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. Back in 2019, at your regular meeting, the commission approved the First Amendment to the Schulman Crossing Phase II Development Agreement, and in that, it established performance incentives for the development of the remaining pad lots associated with that site. That performance incentive would pay $100,000 per developed out parcel pad. At the time of that agreement, there were five of those still available, and those would be issued upon the certificate of occupancy being provided related to, related to that development, assuming that it happened by the end of that, by the end of that year. In December of 2021, the commission received a request to extend that timeline an additional year, and at that point, obviously COVID had been, and was a major impact, so that request was, was granted. We have received another request from that developer to extend that one additional year through December 31 of 2023, and that's the agreement before you this afternoon. The first pad lot has been developed, and the city did pay the initial $100,000 as outlined in that agreement, and the extension is related to the remaining four pad lots that have yet to be developed up to this point. Staff does support the extension of the incentive as reflected in the attached amendment to the agreement. The financial benefit of the city by improving the performance of the TIF through developing that district faster outweighs the upfront costs related to that particular incentive. So the alternatives before you this afternoon are to approve the Third Amendment to the Schulman Crossing Phase II Development Agreement, or not approve that amendment, or you could give staff an alternative direction. Staff does recommend approving the Third Amendment to the Schulman Crossing Phase II Development Agreement, and the fiscal note is outlined in your, your staff packet. The remaining $400,000 would be pulled from a number of different places, assuming you all approve the recommendation that Jared's going to give you in a couple minutes related to Fund V and transferring some dollars into that related to this project. There's also $100,000 in the 2023 general fund budget related to this, and $100,000 in Fund O53 that could also be dedicated for this purpose, assuming those pad lots do get developed over the next year. So with that, would be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
I want to just make sure I'm clear that they, they don't get access to those. I want to just make sure I'm clear that they, they don't get access to those dollars? So just because they, they put down money and they actually begin building, they don't have access to those dollars until a certificate of occupancy is issued?
Yes.
So within the next year, they'd have to locate, buy, build, and then, and then at that time? Wow, that, that's very quick.
It does indicate that if the building permit were to be pulled, that's when we would hold those dollars aside, but we wouldn't deliver them until.
I see. So they're, so they're available? Okay, that's what I was, I was.
Yeah, yes, they are.
The permit being pulled within the year is the.
Is the key.
Is the.
Is the timeline thing.
Yep, yep.
Do you know, do they have any leads on those other four?
Yeah, at the last planning commission meeting, there was, I believe it was a replat related to one of those, one of those parcels. So there is some stuff in the works in terms of getting at least one of those outlots developed, I would assume, in the relatively near future.
I move that we approve the Third Amendment to the Schulman Crossing Phase Two Development Agreement.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve year-end transfers from the general fund to the capital improvement fund for selected 2022 capital projects. Jared?
Good afternoon. The city recently implemented the capital improvement plan administrative policy. In conjunction with the adoption of the policy, the city created a new fund which will be utilized for the projects identified by the capital improvement plan. Amounts will be transferred into this fund to the general fund to finance the cost of projects identified by the capital improvement plan, as well as an interest cost to build up the fund. The intent of the fund will be to self-finance city capital projects and eliminate the interest cost paid when utilizing external financing for capital projects. The attached schedule of transfers proposed for 2022. If you look at this, this is one, one amount. This is the dollars that we're using for the ERP solution that we're implementing. We've made one payment, initially we had $2 million set aside. We've made one payment so far for 33% of the subscription cost. And so that has gone out before the end of the year. So the balance of that $2 million is what we're requesting to transfer into the capital improvement plan fund. We will probably come back, this is kind of new, we're still figuring out how the intricacies of this work. But the idea would be that as we do our budgeting process for 2023 and looking ahead for 2024, we would implement an idea of pulling out the identified capital improvement projects that departments are completing next year, and potentially in the beginning of the year, early in the budget cycle, do a transfer into the capital improvement plan as well with an associated budget amendment for 2023 to authorize us to make expenditures from the fund. So those are both becoming probably the budget amendment first, and then the additional review of 2023 costs that we're likely going to put through this fund rather than have the budgets take it. But the action today is to approve, the alternatives are to transfer the funds from the current year to the capital improvement plan fund as presented, to transfer the funds from the current year to the capital improvement plan fund with modifications to what is presented, or to not approve the transfer of funds. And staff recommends that we approve the funds from current year to the capital improvement plan fund as presented. And as a fiscal note, that total transfer amount would be $1,758,277.
Well, I do want to say I appreciate that, that carryover, so it's always been confusing, you know, and even though that, you know, that they're going to be using the money, the money's always been allocated. So I think this is a really great solution to all that carryover. And now, you know, now it gets it out of the budget, and so it no longer act, looks like they have an inflated budget that they've not been using. So I, I think this is a really great solution.
There a motion?
I'll make the motion to transfer, to approve alternate one, transfer the funds from the current year to the capital improvement plan fund as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve year-end transfers from the general fund to the capital improvement reserve for selected 2022 programs, capital projects, and equipment purchases not completed by year's end. Jared?
Hello again. So this is the, this is the transfer that you're more traditionally been experiencing the last few years. City departments operate on an annual budget that is approved in July for the upcoming year. These budgets include projects, equipment, and program expenses which relate to those departments. If these expenditures are not completed in the current budget year, the funds set aside will become unanticipated cash carryover heading into the next year. Due to unforeseen circumstances, there are times when departments are unable to complete what has been put, what has been set out for them 18 months earlier. It is recognized that these projects, programs, and capital are an important part of the department's budget. So instead of waiting for another budget cycle, the commission has the opportunity each year to consider a transfer of the money into the capital improvement reserve funds. From here, it can be spent for its intended purpose in a subsequent year. The exception to the above explanation would be to the transfer from the recreation department budget, which is currently not part of the general fund. The funds requesting to be included this year for the transfer to the capital improvement reserve are intended to build up for unanticipated capital replacement costs for the Garden Rapids at the Big Pool. Any funds not spent from the Aquatic Facility GL each year will be added to the capital improvement reserve to build up these funds for necessary future costs. In 2023 and beyond, the recreation department will be included in the general fund, so it won't be the outlier that it is right now. The attached schedule of transfers is proposed for 2022. If you have any questions on any of the items, I'd be happy to answer them, but the alternatives today are to transfer the funds from the current year to the capital improvement reserve as presented, to transfer the funds from the current year to the capital improvement reserve with modifications to what is presented, or to not approve the transfer of funds. And staff recommends that the transfer from the current year to the capital improvement reserve as presented. Fiscal note would be that the 2022 transfers from the general fund total $655,000. The transfer from the recreation department totals $35,000, and the combined total to go into the capital improvement reserve for 2022 is $690,000.
I move that we transfer the funds from the current year to the capital improvement reserve as presented.
There a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jared.
Thank you.
Item D, the governing body is asked to approve the 2023 liability, property and liability insurance renewal for the city. City currently has property and liability insurance coverage through Travelers Insurance with Agent Broker's Pro Value Insurance. This expires 12/31 of this year. The city retained the use of an independent third-party insurance consultant, Charlesworth Consulting, to prepare a proposal and analyze the proposals received. The package premium, including all applicable commissions for the recommended program, is $748,034. The, the analysis of the 2022 renewal and the 2023 proposal is attached for governing body review. Your options are to approve the insurance policy as proposed by Travelers Insurance, or do not approve the 2023 property and liability insurance renewal, giving staff direction as to how you would like to go about providing, providing coverage. Staff recommends option one, approving the policy renewal from Travelers Insurance and Pro Value Insurance as allowed, outlined in the Charlesworth Consulting memo. This is a sizable increase in premium, 21% increase over 2022, which is about what was projected earlier in the year. And I think you see some more information and analysis provided by, by Charlesworth, including the history of the renewal. There has been some considerable property value added to our policy, so I don't know that apples to apples over the course of the last couple of years is a totally fair comparison, certainly adding the value of improvements like the zoo improvements, the Garden Rapids at the Big Pool, the gun range, et cetera, some new large equipment replacing older rolling stock. Those things, those things have an impact.
Is the increase, so I, I was looking at it, now was the increase tied to our loss ratio or just overall market conditions? Or is it because of, and I know, like you said, the assets, I can understand.
Both. We do have a loss history in the last couple of years that was taken into consideration.
So that's been part of that.
I make a motion, we approve the 2023 property and liability insurance renewal proposal as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a reduced electrical demand charge for licensed childcare facilities on the church and school rate with an electric, with an electrical demand at charge component. Mike?
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. Staff completed its research on the licensed childcare facilities in Garden City and found that there's five facilities currently on the church and school rate that also pay an electrical demand charge. And that's based upon the size of their load or their disconnect switch. Anyway, all, all five facilities with a, has a combined, has a combined capacity of 378 children. The Community Daycare Center has a capacity of 97 children, Turning Point Academy, 50 children, the KCSL Head Start at Garfield is 15, the First United Methodist Church has a capacity of 66, and the YMCA has a capacity of 120 childcare places. All other childcare facilities are on the church and school rate, but they do not pay an electrical demand charge. So suppose the governing body wanted to provide an additional incentive to help cover the cost of childcare in Garden City, in that case, the governing body could reduce the electrical demand charge by a dollar amount every month for a set period of time for the approved number of children authorized by the state to attend that facility. An example would be if a $1 per authorized child reduction was granted, then the facility would receive that discount applied to its monthly utility bill. So in this example, the Community Daycare Center would receive $97 reduction on its monthly utility bill because it has an approved capacity of 97 children. If the governing body wanted to expand this for 12 months, then the annual total in this example would be $1,164. If all 378 approved childcare positions were provided a $1 reduction in their utility bill, the total benefit would be $3,078 per month, or an annual amount of $36,936. And then just for general reference, the average demand charge of all five facilities for the past 25 months has been $1,111.69. So alternatives, the governing body may direct staff to implement a reduction in the electric demand charges associated with the number of authorized childcare positions, or you may not authorize staff to implement such changes in the demand charges. Staff recommends an implementation of reduction of the demand charges associated with the number of kids, and that would be based upon whatever amount the governing body chose to do, should you choose to do that. If the governing body did choose to reduce it, the financial impact on the electric fund revenues would be based amount, on the amount of the reduction and the term. So an example, if you did $1, like was stated earlier, that'd be $36,936 per year. I just, $2 would be twice that amount. If you went clear up to $5, that'd be $184,680 if you choose to do anything at all. And I'm here to, happy to answer any questions you may have.
So a set period, does that, I mean, obviously that's going to be something set. Let's say it's for three years, does that, does that just continue to go down over those three days, three years? Or does it reset after every year for three years?
What we would do if the commission so chooses to move forward with this is we would verify every year with the state the amount of approved positions in those facilities, and then they would receive that dollar amount, whatever that amount is, per year. And in this case, Commissioner, if you went for three years, that same amount would be that for three-year period.
Okay.
That's how we would, we would want to track that to make sure that we're following the state's approved positions.
So as new, so as new childcare facilities come online, would they need to contact you, or would you automatically know? How would you, so like, say there, because our hope is that there's going to be additional childcare facilities that are going to be able to open or other, or hopefully expand on these other ones, but.
We would, we would monitor, we would ask the state to let us know at the same time when a new childcare facility was approved in Garden City. And then we would look at their utilities that they're going to need and determine whether or not they qualified for this discount or not. If they're not large enough, they won't fit into that demand category.
Yeah, the only thing that was confusing to me when it said positions, because I think of positions as childcare workers and not childcare, not children. So I thought, is that how the state identifies those?
Yeah, that was my understanding.
Okay, yeah, that was confusing, and I was going to ask about that, so.
Yeah, so it's 97 children in one case, so.
I guess my question, the, the ones that we're talking about, the Community Daycare, Turning Point Academy, KCS, First United Methodist, then YMCA, oops, I just hit the wrong thing. But if you go down to the list of child, how do we, how did we pick those particular ones?
Sure, Commissioner, these particular five pay a demand charge on their electric bill. None of the others pay a demand charge.
Okay.
On average, okay.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I, I read that, but then it was like, okay, got it.
Okay. So this, this would be in a reduction for them to make an almost kind of balance with some of the others.
Right, okay. Makes sense now.
No, I move that the governing body directs staff to implement a reduction in electric, electrical demand charges associated with the number of authorized childcare positions.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I think if we could have clarification on, do you want this to be at $1 per month for a one-year basis? Or what's the time and the dollar amount?
Yeah, I would amend.
$1.
Yeah.
Go ahead. You were the one that made the motion.
Yeah, I'll amend the motion to include $1 per childcare position for the next 12 months.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Let's just.
I'll second that, yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right?
Okay, thank you.
Carries, thank you.
Makes it legal now.
Right.
It's recorded.
Please note that Commissioner Ortiz is stepping down.
There's only three of us now. Watch out.
Item F, the governing body is asked to consider and authorize staff to advertise a request for qualifications, including proposed fees for a construction manager at risk delivery method process for Fire Station 3. Chief?
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. On October 4th, 2022, the Fire Station 3 project was advertised for bids. During the approximate five weeks that it was open, city staff was informed by the architect that numerous contractors had reached out and indicated there was interest in the project. No project bids were submitted when bidding period closed on November 9th, 2022. City staff met with the architect and county representatives on Friday, November 8th, 2022, to discuss next steps. During the meeting, the architect informed city and county staff that contact was made with all interested general contractors. The architect indicated that some interested parties were not able to bond the project, had uncertainty in material availability, and deliveries in today's market, or were not interested in bidding using the design bid build process. Based on the feedback, the architect advised city staff to re-advertise the bid, changing the delivery process to construction manager at risk. Additionally, staff received some unsolicited feedback on the project from parties that indicated that they were interested in bidding the project. Much of the feedback was the same the architect received directly. Our few, however, a few additional concerns were received, such as not having a pre-bid meeting, late addendums that could not be accommodated, concerns that fee specifications included in the plans, and some challenges in the outline project team. As a result of the feedback, if the city commission has a desire to change the hiring, change the hire design professionals, this is the point in the project that we could complete this step. Given all the feedback received, city staff is requesting the city commission change the delivery method to the project, project for design bid build to construction management. The construction management is a project delivery method in which city hires a construction manager to oversee the project from design to construction, close out and deliver, and deliver it with a guaranteed maximum price provided to the city before the bid stage, because the CM could not, could be responsible for paying the difference when going over budget. The construction manager must closely manage the project budget and schedule to stay within a guaranteed maximum price. The city has used the construction management as a delivery method in the projects such as the zoo and the pool. Both are ultimately successful. Staff did have some delays on the zoo as some details were finalized, but once it was finalized, the project moved forward effectively. Staff believes this delivery method will allow the project to move forward and yield a good final path. The alternative before you is the governing body will authorize staffs to release requests for a proposal, including proposed fees to the construction manager at risk of delivery method. Alternative two would be revise, re-advertise the project in spring 2023 as it is and solicit bids with the current design bid build, design bid build method. Three, we terminate the existing contract with the architect and identify another path moving forward. Alternative four would be provide staff in additional direction and a recommendation. Be able to answer any questions. Be able to answer any questions.
Well, Chief, I have a question. So you said that when you received the feedback, so is this the feedback that they were, those who were, had interest in bidding, was this the feedback that they gave you that the construction manager at risk was the way that they would rather see you go because of all the reasons that were in the memo?
Yeah, the architect heard the same feedback we heard, and with the bonding and everything and the material, construction management at risk nowadays is the preferred method is what we're hearing from contractors.
Would that, does that open up the ability for more local contractors? Even if the, because I know when we did the pool, I just lost their name. Who did it?
McKellen Gordon.
McKellen Gordon. When they did, I know they hired a lot of local contractors. So is this how that, would that also open the prospect for local contractors who maybe not be able to hold the bond?
It could, yes.
Okay. Is that something that we can encourage the contractor, the contract manager, that, you know, we would love to see local, local organizations or local businesses be able to bid on some of those parts? Or is that something that they're totally in control of?
Yeah, it's a possibility. So as we do, you know, the interviews with the construction manager, we can, if it's a local guy, I'll, or an out-of-town, we could make it to where that could be part of it, encourage local contractors to come in and help.
I mean, I know they did, and I don't know if that was something we encouraged or something that they did because of, I mean, just knowing that that would, you know, really help our local economy also.
Agreed.
I make a motion. We approve to authorize staff to release a request for a proposal, including proposed fees for the construction manager at risk, the CMAR delivery method.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Item G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve. Oh, yeah, we'll wait for Commissioner Ortiz.
He can run fast, but wait, yeah.
Yeah, wait.
He can run fast.
It's a seven-second delay. Okay, item twelve G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve five appointments to fill seats on the Cultural Relations Board. Derek.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. The Cultural Relations Board has five board positions with terms expiring in December of 2022. Current Cultural Relations Board members, Elda Zapian, Carmen Del Torre, Mary Buckman, and Vanessa Gaten, would like to be considered for reappointment to their current position on the Cultural Relations Board. William Gwynn has served two consecutive terms and is ineligible to serve a third. Kay Mcfee submitted an application to be considered for an available board member position. Her application was presented and reviewed by the Cultural Relations Board at the regularly scheduled meeting held on December fifth of 2022. The Cultural Relations Board recommends reappointing Elda Zapian, Carmen Del Torre, Mary Buckman, and Vanessa Gaten to, and appointing Kay Mcfee to the open board member position. Staff has put together two alternatives for the commission to choose from. Alternative number one would be to reappoint Elda Zapian, Carmen Del Torre, Mary Buckman, Vanessa Gaten, and to appoint Kay Mcfee to the Cultural Relations Board through December of 2025. And two would be to do not reappoint the four returning board members or to appoint Kay Mcfee to the Cultural Relations Board and to recommend further recruitment of applications. The recommended action from the Cultural Relations Board is to approve alternative number one, and there is no fiscal note.
I move that we approve, move to reappoint, alternative number one, I don't want to mess up everybody's names, to the cultural, and appoint Kay Mcfee to the returning board members, and then to appoint Kay Mcfee to the Cultural Relations Board through December 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item H, the governing body is asked to consider and approve filling one expiring term and extending two terms on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Afternoon, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. At our last meeting, we reorganized the Public Grounds and Tree Board and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board into a single board. With that, we talked about last time, we would have to bring some appointments back in front of you. And in order to kind of organize terms, we have asked to also extend a couple of terms. So in reaching out to the existing board members, Linda Motley was the only one that expressed interest to continue to serve on the newly formed Parks and Rec Advisory Board. In that, Prithvi Murthy and Marilyn Porter also agreed to have their terms extended. So in the memo, you can see they're the existing members. Marilyn Porter, if extended, would be an extension from 2023 to 2024. Prithvi Murthy would be an extension from 2024 to 2025. And then, if you choose to appoint Linda Motley, that position would be through December of 2025 as well. So the alternatives before the governing body, they may, alternative number one, you may appoint Linda Motley to a term ending in December 2025, extend Marilyn Porter's term until December 2024, and extend Prithvi Murthy's term until December 2025. Alternative two, you can appoint Linda Motley and not extend the terms. Or alternative three, you can extend the terms and not appoint Linda Motley, or give us some other direction for alternative four. We recommend alternative one, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, so were there no addition, or were there no other applications for these?
No, we have, we have not received an application for the Parks and Rec.
The newly formed, whatever it's called.
Either the Public Grounds and Tree Board or the Parks and Rec Board for several months. We do anticipate probably, as this moves forward, we'll probably end up being back in front of you. You know, when you move times around, it may not work in everybody's schedule, so.
Well, I like how you're staggering, and so that makes it nice.
Yeah.
I move that we appoint Linda Motley to the term ending in December 2025, extend Marilyn Porter's term until December 2024, and extend Prithvi Murthy's term until December 2025.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item twelve I, the governing body is asked to consider and approve appointments to the Public Utilities Advisory Board.
Yes, good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. The Public Utilities Advisory Board is made up of five members appointed by the governing body. The PUAB is charged with advising the governing body regarding issues impacting the general public from the five public utilities that the city operates. Currently, there are two members whose terms will expire on December 31st of 2022. Mr. Chris Law, his term will expire on December 31st and is eligible to serve another three-year term, and he has indicated he is willing to do so. Ronaldo Mesa, his term also expires on December 31st, 2022, and he also has indicated that he's willing to continue to serve for another three-year term. The current members of the Public Utilities Advisory Board are Beverly Schmick Glass, she's the chairwoman, Mary Eves, John Haunt, and then, of course, Chris Law and Ronaldo Mesa. So your alternatives, the governing body may appoint Chris Law and Ronaldo Mesa to an additional three-year term on the Public Utilities Advisory Board, or the governing body may appoint someone else, however you see fit. Staff has no recommendations, and there are no financial impacts by making an appointment. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'll make the motion to reappoint Chris Law and Ronaldo Mesa to additional three-year terms on the Public Utilities Advisory Board.
Second.
So we moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, too.
Your tie said that when you walked up.
Commissioners, that's all the business items. I would, jumping back to the calendar, just put something on your radar, and I think Celine will follow up. Narrowed down Mike Conda for training in February. It looks like the leading dates are February second or February seventh, I'm sorry, February second or February 16th. So if there's strong, those are both Thursdays. If there's a strong preference one way or the other, might be looking for that email. Otherwise, I think we would lean for that one to come sooner in the calendar. That frees up more dates for us for, for the retreat. Sixteenth would be a little early for the retreat, so, but it might create some space between taking a morning off for the training and then taking a full day off from your daytime responsibilities for, for a goal-setting retreat shortly thereafter. So be looking for that. I think we're ready for item J, the consent agenda. If approved, it would be J one through five.
I'll make the motion to approve consent agenda items, letter J, items one through five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, ready for Commissioner reports.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Why am I first again? This is just like yesterday. Just a couple, yeah. Just a couple of things that I'd have to share. The wreaths across America was probably a good event this last week, Saturday, I believe, but I think there was a record number of wreaths that were donated, thirteen forty-eight or forty-something, rather, but that was a, just kind of a neat, neat way to honor those that we've lost, so. And then, also with Christmas coming up, just, just kind of, I had, my sister kind of had just a little bit of a shock at one of the shopping centers here, but I'd just like to, just remind everybody that there are still some bad things that happen in our small community, and hate to bring that up, but I'd just like to just bring that, even, even with our police and officers and whatnot, looking out, there's, there's just tons of ways that we can kind of lose track of our little ones and, and, you know, we just, I just want to remind you that, keep an eye on your loved ones, keep an eye on little ones as they kind of wander off in stores, especially now with it being busy and visitors in town and whatnot, but I just, it was heartbreaking to hear that from my sister who has, you know, a granddaughter that was shopping, so just be aware of your surroundings and things, especially with the items being lost and stolen from your vehicles, lock up your vehicles and things like that. But it is Christmas season. We'd like to spread joy, the love. The lights are wonderful in town. Just, just love on your, your friends and neighbors and family and, and keep them safe. Merry Christmas.
Commissioner Andrew.
So I, I really enjoyed the pre-meeting. I thought the interview style worked really well. I wish you would have had tough questions for Matt, because I'd like to see him stump Matt every once in a while. Unfortunately, maybe we'll have to give him some, but I know that Jared Ruder, the president of the Garden City Community College, I really enjoyed the information, and it really brought a lot of clarification of what's happening out, out there, and I mean, all the great things they're doing. So I really appreciated, I learned more through the interview style than I thought I would. So I was, and I loved having a copy of their strategic plan. It was, boy, they're doing some really great things out there. I also wanted to say, you know, I knew the staff report, sometimes we don't highlight them. I really appreciated Jennifer's staff report, and I read through it, and it brought a lot of, there was a lot of questions I had, and I really appreciate you clarifying those. I could have emailed those, but it was nice that you were here that we could answer. But I really want to say thank you to the people who, with the staff who put the reports. I know that sometimes they're not highlighted, but they're much appreciated, and I always forget to say that, and I just want to say, it's a lot of energy to put together a really good report, and we know these things don't just happen by themselves, so I just want to, and there's a lot of people feeding into the staff reports. Also, I received a really great Christmas card from the zoo the other day, and electronic one, so that was really fun. I also wanted to say, you know, with Garden City and our, with Western Kansas, our weather is so crazy. So one day you're watering in December, you're watering your lawn, and you have all your things going, and the next day, it's one degree, and you forgot to disconnect your hoses. So I know this Thursday, it's supposed to be one degree in Garden City, and then there's supposed to be a big thirty-five mile an hour wind. So if you've forgotten to disconnect your hoses, this is something I just want to remind us all of, because it is such a bummer come spring to find water in your basement. It's only happened once, but just remember, then the next week after that, you'll need to reconnect them, because again, it's going to be in the fifties or sixties. So just make sure you stay safe during, during the weather. I know a lot of people are traveling this time of the year. Please be safe, and I know there's, make sure you pay attention to, I'm not the weather person in our family, but my wife looks out for that weather, but make sure you pay attention to the weather and just be safe as you go. Remember, a motel or hotel room is much cheaper than car repairs are being towed off of the, out of the middle of somewhere. And I also want to just say Merry Christmas. It's been an incredible year this year, and so I really appreciate all that the City of Garden City, the staff, and the employees have done, and it's just been wonderful to work with you this year, so Merry Christmas.
Commissioner Cessna.
Yeah, just to follow up, I know last city commission meeting I announced, and it was kind of a pre-number, but the Western Kansas Community Foundation finally came up with the total number amount, which is over eight hundred thousand dollars that they raised during match day. So it really shows that we do have a giving community and really helps support those organizations that helps our most needy and vulnerable people here in our community. So thank you to everyone that helped during that, that drive. And again, like the other commissioners said, I just wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a healthy and happy prosperous new year, and we'll see you in 2023.
To echo what everybody said, I really enjoyed the pre-meeting today. It did, the time went by really quickly, and there was a lot to it. I had a chance to catch Dr. Ruder in the parking lot and thanked him as well, and I know that he said that he also enjoyed it, and so I hope to see, you know, maybe more of that style or something, but I really, really liked it. To kind of go off what the other commissioners talked about with the cold weather, the United Presbyterian Church will open as a warming place this Thursday and Friday. On Thursday, it'll be from one until six. Friday, it will be from ten until one, and they ask that you enter through the south doors, and that's if you know of anybody who might need that service, to send them to the Presbyterian Church. I know that, you know, with a lot, with cold weather, sometimes people just don't realize just how quickly frostbite can occur, and especially if you live in a place where it maybe isn't as insulated as it should be, it can, that wind and cold can really impact, and so it's best to be just warm and to take advantage of that as well. Yes, I would also like to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, it's also Hanukkah, I did learn that, and a Happy New Year as well. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all for coming.
Yes, thank you.
Good job, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Property was just undevelopable, or, you know, so I really appreciate you letting us know where it was at and that you do have plans to move on, because I know, it's a really nice property along, you know, along Kansas Avenue, which is really one of our busiest streets, so I'm glad you have a plan going forward, so.
Yeah, and we do, and it's in our best interest to get it done as soon as possible, so.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the extension letter.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion, second, any discussion?
Well, do you have an estimated timeline of when you think the construction might start on it, after winter?
Robert Dollop didn't come by, but he said that we should be able to get it done before July of next year.
Okay.
Should be ready to go.
Yeah, I think as long as we get, I mean, there is some hurdles, but surveyors and things like you're talking about, but as long as, as long as we get this done
Right.
within this year, I'm comfortable.